Go to the policy and say, this is, this is what is on the books and there's no, you know, there's no back and forth and finger pointing, well, I shouldn't get that because he got this. And it's really a more professional way of doing it. So.
John, if I may interject, I agree and it's smart. And I urge everybody to vote for it.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you. I appreciate the PMP committee reviewing that. But that's just a little bit of background for those of you who aren't on that committee. I get a little long-winded when I talk about those things. That probably could have been a 30 second thing, right?
At least forty-five.
All right. Well, anyway, you have the committees and I'll accept a motion to approve the committee reports.
Motion.
Motion by Rich.
Second.
By Dan Warner. Any questions? All the roll.
John, whoop, just a quick question.
Yeah, Joe.
Does a pointer to that title, does that involve a salary change at all?
Yes, and that will go through the finance committee. So the salary portions go through finance. But it is, it is a different, a different job title under civil service.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, go ahead, Missy.
Poncello?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Seven Eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to the resolution portion of the meeting. And the first one is a bond resolution.
And I have to apologize because there's a paragraph that I left off of this, but luckily it's the first paragraph. So it won't be on what you have, but I will send you all a corrected copy via email. Which should start, a resolution authorizing various capital projects in and for the city of Cornell, Steuben County, New York, at an estimated cost of $795,000 and authorizing the issuance of $795,000 bonds of said city to pay costs thereof. Whereas all conditions precedent to the financing of the capital project herein after described, including compliance with the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, have been performed, now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Common Council of the City of Cornell, Steuben County, New York, as follows. Section one, the following capital projects, including incidental costs and expenses, are hereby authorized. A, roof replacements at a maximum estimated cost of $685,000, being a class of objects or purposes having a period of probable usefulness of 25 years pursuant to subdivision 12A1 of paragraph A of section 11.00 of local finance law. B, replacement of pump station at a maximum estimated cost of $75,000, being a specific object or purpose having a period of probable usefulness of 40 years pursuant to subdivision four of paragraph A of section 11.00 of the local finance law. And C, replacement of boiler at public safety building at a maximum estimated cost of $35,000, being a specific object or purpose having a period of probable usefulness of 10 years pursuant to subdivision 13 of paragraph A of section 11.00 of the local finance law. Two, the plan for the financing of such objects or purposes consists of the issuance of $795,000 bonds of said city hereby authorized to be issued, therefore pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law allocated as set forth in section one hereof provided, however, the amount of bonds to be issued shall be reduced to the extent of grants received therefore. And we're going to skip down to section eight at this point. This resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent or purposes of Treasury Regulations, section 1.150-2. Other than as specified in this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis, or otherwise set aside with respect to permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. In section nine, this resolution, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in summary form in the official newspaper of said city for such purpose, together with a notice of the city clerk in substantially the form provided in section 81.00 of local finance law.
And even skipping over that middle part is still a long-winded resolution. So good job, Missy. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion and I'll, we'll get into it a little bit here. Motion by John Allison. Welcome to the meeting, John. I just tried calling you, so you can ignore the call.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, we got a motion by John. Did I see another hand? Motion by Jim Bassage. Okay, so you remember last year, we talked about some of these projects, some of the roof replacement projects in particular, and because of COVID and, you know, what we anticipated was in a, you know, pretty large decline in revenues. We basically took some of the projects off the table and put them on the back burner. So now that we're starting to come out of, you know, the pandemic and we can see, see light at the end of the tunnel, you know, some of these things that we've kind of kicked down the road, we're trying to get back, obviously roof replacements, you don't want to go too long with some of these. Some of the roof replacements that we're talking about include the, the public safety building. That one's already leaking. So, you know, we want to try to get after that before, you know, a bad problem turns into a worse problem. We've talked about in the past, the, the multiple buildings down at the, at Rich's plant, the wastewater facility, and those, those roofs are, you know, 1982, 1983 vintage. So, you know, we've, you know, they far exceeded their, their life expectancy. But, you know, like any roof, you know, whether it's your, you know, your own personal property or, you know, a business, you can only, you can only really go so long before these things start giving out. Pump stations, you know, we've got pump stations around up in the town. Those things are starting to show their age and, you know, we, we have one in here. Really, there's a second one out there that we need to replace, maybe next year, the year after. We think we can get, you know, a couple more years out of that. But those pump stations are, you know, you don't want those to fail because you don't want sewage backing up. So those things you really have to stay ahead of if, you know, whenever you have a sewage backup, if it ends up spilling out into the streets or, you know, above ground and the DEC comes in and, you know, it's just a, you know, another mess on top of a mess. So we have to be proactive in that regard. The boiler at the public safety building, that failed the inspection about a month or so ago. And, you know, it's real, it's old, it's beyond repair, and it's something that we're just going to have to bite the bullet and, and replace. So that's kind of the Cliff Notes edition of that. Anyone have any questions on anything else? I know you're probably familiar with some of them.
Fair, is the, is the roof program, was that the one that Mitch said you had the big bubble? Was that part of it? You had the bubble on top of City Hall?
No, that was, we actually did that one this past year, Rich. That, that one was probably the, probably the worst one and the most, the most likely to give way. And, you know, and we didn't want to compromise the courtroom and have that thing burst. The other one, there's, that was kind of like an odd thing, having like a bubble where, you know, where water was getting under it. The other ones are more like a traditional, there's, you know, just starting to leak in spots. But that one, we actually took care of last year. So that one's all set. So the, oh, the one that I didn't mention is the, this includes the arcade. So across from City Hall on the Seneca Street side, we have that walkway that has a roof over it. And I don't really remember how the city came in possession of this. I think it was some, part of some, I don't know, deal way, way back. But we're responsible for that roof that covers from the ARC, the Harazoo, Sterns, and, and beyond. That thing's getting old and, and starting to leak and it's causing, it's actually causing water damage at the Harazoo now. So that was another one that we had planned to do last year and we tried to get one more year out of it. But honestly, we just, we have to bite the bullet and get that done. So that, that was the other one I forgot.
Hey, John, in section four, it talks about annually, there'll be a tax levy to all taxable property. Could you touch on that?
Let me just flip over there. Section four, Jim?
Yep, the last sentence.
There shall be. So, so. Yeah, so, you know, in a nutshell, what that means is anytime we borrow, anytime we go out to bond like this, we have to be able to pay it back. And how do we, how do we pay it back? It's through our tax levy. So that's just, you know, language addressing that. It's more technical language if anything.
So that, well, that, well, every year for.
There's not a special roof tax, if that's what you're, you're indicating.
Just saying, if, if there's a tax increase this year, that tax levy will be built into that. Yes or no?
Yeah. So, so anything that we budget for will be built into that. Yeah. So that would include a roof, that would include, you know, we, I don't know, we need a new curb over here or, you know, a new pavilion over there. So any of the, any of those things would be built into that levy. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that includes debt. Debt payments. Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland? Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger? Shuna Barger?
Do we lose them?
He's still on there, but.
Wow.
That's a yes. Okay. So that's eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next resolution is the Steuben County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Whereas the city of Cornell, with the assistance from the county of Steuben, has gathered information and prepared the Steuben County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas the plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, as amended, and whereas the city of Cornell, Common Council, has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore be it resolved that this city of Cornell Board does hereby adopt the Steuben County Pre-Disaster Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, including all corrections as may be required by FEMA and as revised from time to time.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion? Motion by John Allison, second by, second by Rich Argent Terry. But did everyone get this included in your packet, the brief summary from Tim Marshall?
Yes.
So I, I think, you know, if you go down to the second paragraph, you know, it, it kind of says it all. Local government must have a mitigation plan approved pursuant to this act in order to receive hazard mitigation grant program project funds. This is funding that is important following a federally declared disaster in order to help rebuild communities following disasters. In order for your jurisdiction to gain federal approval, a mitigation plan must be adopted by the local jurisdiction. So I, I think really that kind of tells, you know, pretty much everything you need to know about it. It's a 550-page document. So I, I expect you all read it from cover to cover over the weekend. And there'll, there'll be a quiz after, by the way. But this is one of the things, this has been in the works for a long time. Glad I don't have to spend the time writing these things that would get anything else done, but.
I'm going to wait for the movie to come out.
Yeah. It might be a trilogy or.
With you, Rich.
The Godfather.
Anyway, we, we have the motions. Any questions on it? Jim Bassage would love to answer any questions you have on this mitigation plan. If not, call the roll.
All right, Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage? Shuna Barger?
Yes.
That's eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the next is a budget amendment to reflect a donation from the Bethesda Foundation for the new ventilator.
Whereas a budget amendment is necessary to reflect an increase due to a donation from the Bethesda Foundation to purchase a ventilator. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Cornell, New York, that the 2020-2021 City of Cornell budget now reflects the following adjustments. Increase in revenue to A2705 Gibson donations by $18,000 and increase expenditure A4540.200 ambulance equipment by $18,000.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion? Motion by Jessica, second by Kevin. So we had a, we actually had a little press conference, you know, photo op with the Bethesda Foundation the other day in front of the fire department. And, you know, and again, I just wanted to express on behalf of the city, our appreciation for, for this donation. It's really, you know, it's, it's grants that are out there. It's the Bethesda Foundation and other entities that really backfill some of the, you know, some of the gaps that we have here. You know, when, when equipment rises or equipment needs come up. So, you know, we're very appreciative. And the Bethesda Foundation came through for us, I think it was two years ago. They gave us a substantial amount of money toward the fire department as well. So, you know, again, very, very appreciative. And this really goes a long way and, and helps advance everything that the, the fire department does for our community. So we have the motions. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the next three resolutions are annual resolutions. The first one is to draw checks.
Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, city chamberlain, and city clerk be authorized to draw checks.
Short and sweet. Is there a motion? Motion by Kevin. Second by John Allison. Any questions? Call the roll.
Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next resolution is to name official depositories of the city.
Now therefore be it resolved that Chase Manhattan Bank, MBIA Municipal Investor Service Corps, Five Star Bank, Community Bank, and Citizens in Northern Bank be and are hereby designated official depositories for monies of the city of Cornell, New York for fiscal year 2021-22.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Dan Warner, second by John Allison. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello? I'm going to abstain. 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 Okay, yeah. Allison?
Yes.
Hold on. Let Melissa go out of the room. Put it on the record that she went out of the room because she's abstaining with the conflict. Just take the vote and then bring her back in.
So Joe, that would be, that would be a recusal then, instead of extension?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll walk into the hallway.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll shout real loud for you.
I'm sorry, it's stupid rules. I don't make them.
Okay, Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger? Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Melissa, yell to, Melissa to come back.
You can come back now.
I'm sorry. I just want to keep the record clean.
Be sorry. It's fine.
We occasionally have to do this. We had to do it with Rich a couple of times with, when we were working with TTA and things and not the first time.
Let's just keep the, the record clean.
It's fine. We're good.
Okay. And last resolution is to name the official newspaper. And I do believe Chris Potter has joined us. I thought I saw his name down below.
I don't know if I let him in or not. Don't be him.
So on the second page.
There he is. Yep. All right. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby designate the Spectator as the official newspaper for 2020-2021.
Is there a motion? Motion by Melissa, second by?
Second.
Second by Rich Argent Terry. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. There, there's a headline for tomorrow, Chris Potter. Okay, we don't have any petitions, but we do have claims.
Now therefore be it resolved that claims in the amount of $628,121.74 as, as audited by the Audit Committee of the Common Council of the City of Cornell are approved and authorized paid as audited. Common Council, $295,861.25. Community Development, $259,466.62. Payrolls, $72,793.87, for a total of $628,121.74.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Dan Warner, second by Jessica Cleveland. Any questions? Call the roll.
Poncello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argent Terry?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion of the meeting. So we have good news regarding, regarding stimulus.
Council meeting right now.
Oh.
I'm trying to get you on, I'm trying to get you, you can't hear me, can you, Jack?
I can hear you loud and clear. We can all hear you. This actually might be more interesting than what I'm about to say, so.
All right, I muted Joe.
Okay. It was just getting good. I don't, who knows where it would have went? Well, anyway, I, I'm sure you've all been following the news. The Congress has passed the stimulus relief. And, you know, obviously there's a wide assortment of items in there. The, the one that we've been talking about that's, you know, been very important to us here at the municipal level is the, the funding for local governments. And Cornell is slotted to get $910,000. So that, that is good news. That's really good news. You know, I've always, I've always prefaced that by saying, you know, don't get too excited with the federal money because we don't know what the state will do with our AIM funding. And, and I've been really trying to, you know, work our state reps and my contacts and Albany over, you know, what AIM is going to look like. And over the weekend, the, the Assembly and the State Senate both crafted their one-house bills. And for those of you who don't know what one-house bills are, during the budget process at the state level, the New York State Assembly comes up with their budget, the New York Senate comes up with their budget, and they're called one-house budgets. So what they do is they, they try to basically set a baseline of where, where they want things, where they want things spending-wise, where they want things taxing-wise, and they, they set a list of priorities. So what happens next is they, they pass their one-house budgets in each chamber, and then they sit down and negotiate with the governor. Obviously, the governor has his hands full with a bunch of things, and I, I won't go into that. But in both budgets, AIM funding is, is restored to normal levels. In the Assembly budget, there's actually an increase in AIM, which we haven't seen an increase in AIM in 12 years. This is something I've been complaining about endlessly since I became mayor and even before. AIM funding has stayed stagnant at the same dollar, fixed dollar amount for 12 consecutive years. And, you know, adjusted for inflation, we're actually losing money. I, I don't know what the end product will be. They have to go to negotiation with the governor. Those negotiations should be pretty interesting this year, more so than, than in past years. But I'm cautiously optimistic that our AIM funding will stay at, at normal levels. If we, if, if it stays at a normal level, I'll consider that a win. If somehow the Assembly were to, you know, push a few more dollars into AIM, that would be a, a bonus. So, you know, stay tuned on that. I, I don't know when the governor plans to sit down with the leaders of the, of the Senate and Assembly. Typically, it's, you know, the majority leader in, in each house that sits down with the governor. I would hope that that process begins in earnest in the next couple of days. Obviously, you know, we have the same, you know, we, the city of Cornell has the same fiscal year as the state. So we are both April 1 through March 31. So we're up against the clock, they're up against the clock. For those of you on finance, you know, we, we did give you two versions, two draft versions of the budget to look over this weekend. Chamberlain and I have been working closely together, you know, trying to, trying to project what our revenues are going to be, but also trying to keep taxes low. You know, people have been beat up throughout COVID in so many different ways. And, and we're very cognizant of that. And, and we've been working very hard to make sure that we keep taxes low this year. So once we get that final number, we'll be able to, you know, plug that into our budget and, you know, and get that in front of finance. Melissa, I know we, you know, we tentatively have a meeting for Wednesday that we're looking at. I'm going to see kind of what things look like tomorrow. You know, we, we might want to push that out a little bit if, depending on what happens at the state. I'm burning up the phone lines today, trying to get as much information as I can. But as soon as we get that, you know, definitive number that we can plug into our budget, and that's really the last, you know, large piece of the puzzle that we need to, to put in place before we can, you know, get that budget finalized before the, the Finance Committee, or at least for their consideration. So that's where we are. So it's, it's good news. And potentially more good news over here. We just got to keep our fingers crossed in the meantime that the leaders in the, in the State Assembly and Senate, and ultimately the governor, recognize the, the needs for us here locally and, and provide that money. And, and it looks like CHIPS funding is going to either stay at the current level or possibly a slight increase. You know, it depends where they go. One house has a little bit more, the other has it staying flat. I, I'd be happy with, with either, just so we're not sliding backwards. Two other funding streams really quickly. Winter Recovery and Pave New York. They kind of dovetail with CHIPS. Both of those go towards road repair. Good news is that the, both houses have those monies restored. One of them, Pave New York was, was in one. Winter Recovery was cut out of the governor's executive draft budget. The, both houses have those monies restored in there. So fingers crossed going into these next days, because these, these coming days will be very important as we try to wrap up that final picture of what the state budget and ultimately what our city budget is going to look like. But, but things are looking pretty, pretty good right now. And, and I think I can speak for all of you when I say we could all use some good news out of Albany. So that's your, that's your fiscal report from the nation's capital and the state's capital. But shorter than that county mitigation plan, by the way.
So John, you're going to let us know from the Finance Committee whether or not we want to wait rather than meeting on Wednesday? You're going to let us know tomorrow sometime?
Yeah, I will. And I'll wait as long as I can tomorrow, Melissa. My, my fear is, you know, if we get together and we don't have the final number, I, I don't want to waste your time. And, I mean, you know, we can play what if, you know, but at the end of the day, we need that number. Because it'd be, and you have to, you have to remember, in the governor's executive draft budget, he is still calling for a reduction in AIM based on the municipality's reliance on that AIM funding. So in other words, depending on the percentage of AIM in relation to your budget, that would depend on how much you would get cut. So that could be a 2%, a 5%, a 15% So that could be a two percent, a five percent, a fifteen or a twenty percent in some cases, just depending on what percentage AIM is of your entire budget. So, but the, the, the Senate and Assembly have both restored AIM. So hopefully they'll win out and, and the governor's plan will go by the wayside. I will say, state revenues have exceeded expectations. You know, looking at the comptrollers reports recently, revenues have, have been higher than what they projected last year or even, you know, six or eight months ago. So, you know, the revenues are higher. You have the fed, federal stimulus money pouring into the state. You know, the governor didn't get the fifteen billion. I, you know, I never really thought he would. They got twelve point seven, then, you know, twelve point seven billion is nothing to sneeze at. And, you know, just reading some of the reports that I've read over the last few days, there, there really is enough money flowing through New York State where they, they don't need to cut AIM. They don't need to cut CHIPS. They don't need to, in, in fact, I read a report just earlier tonight from the Empire Center, which is a fiscal watchdog group based out of Albany, that they're already talking about, you know, pumping four billion more dollars into school foundation aid this year. So if, if they're pumping four billion more into, you know, foundation aid, there's no excuse to, to cut AIM funding. I, I hope that they'll, you know, the senators and the Assembly people will stick to their guns and, and maintain that funding for us. That is my update, so.
John, you said state revenue. Is, is, any sense of where we are with county sales tax?
Yeah, we, we've been trying to monitor that. You know, we, we've been, we've been doing not as bad as we anticipated, Jim. Obviously, you know, going through Christmas and, you know, we, we had a pretty good holiday season. So, so that, you know, that goes up. But it's, it's after Christmas that you worry about. And, you know, and then when you get into these, you know, traditionally slow months, you know, there, there's always a little bit of a lag. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see. I, I don't think, we're not going to hit that twelve percent that we budgeted for. We'll, we'll come in under that. It's just a matter of where, how much. But I, I think the Finance Committee did a really good job making the hard call, making the hard decisions last year of putting the city in a place where, you know, we're, we're kind of built in a little bit of buffer. I know there was a lot of, a lot of heartburn last year having to make those tough decisions. But, but doing so and coupled with keeping, keeping the budgets down. If, if you look at the city spending throughout the budgets, you know, the, the different departments, we've done a really good job of holding the line and keeping that spending down. If, if you look at the percentage of spending throughout our fiscal budget this year in comparison to a year ago, we're at a lower percentage. So we've, we've contracted the budget, because you remember, the budget that we're currently in is a smaller dollar amount than the previous budget. And we're at a, a smaller percentage of dollars spent than we were then. So, you know, we, you know, some, some of that is honestly, you know, kind of putting some things off and putting things on the back burner. But bottom line is we've, we've held the line. Our department has have done a fantastic job. The City Chamberlain has done an amazing job. And, you know, we've all been working together, trying to, you know, trying to minimize the impact to the city. And, and you'll notice, we haven't had to lay people off. A lot of municipalities around the state have had layoffs, they have had furloughs, and we haven't had to do that. So, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate and, and a lot of that is just, you know, all of us working together as a team and, and being cognizant of what we're up against. And, and that goes for, for the council and, and the Finance Committee in particular, you know. We had to, we had to go through that last year and, you know, this year, things are looking quite a bit better. Fingers crossed, and we're almost there. That's my update.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the gallery? Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. No one, really? Oh, now the hands go up. Motion by Kevin, second by Jim. Any questions? Call the roll.
Conicello?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine? Oh, you're muted, Kevin.
Sorry, yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Shuna Barger?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you, everyone. As I get more news from Albany, I will definitely pass it along and finance, stay tuned. Melissa will be in touch sometime tomorrow. I'll let you know either way. And everyone, have a good rest of the night. Thank you.
You too.
You too.
See you, everybody.
Bye now.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.